Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you all for joining us here today. Let's start things off with a roll call.
Ma Murray.
Here.
Gene Hollis.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Schmitz.
Here.
Raphos.
Here.
Johnson.
Uh, first order of business is approving minutes from our April 1st meeting. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, we were going to get started with the, um, some information on speaking at board and commission guidelines and form. Sarah, take it away.
Thanks for letting me join you this evening. I am here just to bring some information forward and to clarify if you have any questions related to public hearings. I left at the dais for you some information regarding community forums and public hearing, um, guidelines. And it's kind of a one pager for board and commission members who are involved in either doing a community forum or a public hearing. And tonight, obviously, we're having a public hearing. Included in the packet was the sign-in form for residents or people interested in speaking on the topic to sign in. When we are doing a public hearing, the, um, the team over here supporting you, the staff team can help call and announce people to the podium. But overall, the board and commission is in charge of the hearing. And if there are circumstances that occur that a hearing needs to be postponed, suspended, or just recessed in general, there's guidelines on the back of the sheet that I handed out for everybody. So just kind of some talking points, and I know you guys are, you know, well-versed in, in the hearing process here, but I just wanted to add those tools for you if you need them.
Great, thank you very much. Um, to touch on that point about, um, the pub, for the public hearing session, if there's anyone here who would like to speak, I'll make sure you sign in on our signup sheet and you'll be called, um, by Sarah Lavoie over here. Um, she's got the signup sheet in front of her, so if you do want to speak, um, this evening, please make sure you sign up. Alright, let's get into this. Uh, first up, Andrew?
Good evening, planning commissioners. Tonight, we have a planned unit development preliminary plat and vacation of easement application for 853rd Avenue Northeast. The applicant is Cass Wilson Architects on behalf of Lincoln Avenue, uh, Communities. And just to kind of go into a little bit of detail of what we're doing today. Nope, if you just wanna run then. Um, essentially, they're coming in for a plan unit development, a preliminary plat, and a vacation of easement. But what the, they're initially doing right now is setting the redevelopment parameters and the underlying zoning standards that will apply to every phase of this project. Thank you. Uh, so this is kind of a higher level, like, we are setting the zoning parameters that the, every phase of this is gonna be held to. The Metronic site is 11.74 acres and the proposed redevelopment plan contains four separate phases. The first phase is, uh, first few phases are likely to start in 26 to 27 and be the construction of two L-shaped, six-story affordable apartment buildings, each containing approximately 134 apartment units centrally located within the site. The next phase is anticipated to begin in early '26 with 58 three-story townhome, uh, can, townhomes being constructed adjacent to Sullivan Lake, um, to start in the spring or summer of '26. And then the last phase is kind of the most uncertain of them, just because, um, it is kind of speculative in nature. It's a mixed-use, um, building containing 12,000 square feet of commercial space and then a range of 150 to 175, uh, market rate apartment units. And that is the most kind of up-in-the-air part of the project. Those later phases are gonna kind of determine on other developers being interested and wanting to, uh, buy those parcels once they are subdivided. Just for some context, uh, the Metronic site is at the northern end of the municipal boundary, shared, um, along the border with Fridley. It is kind of, it's got a combination of uses around it with the Sullivan Lake Park directly to the west, townhome developments to the west and south. Um, to the south of the property is more, you have a variety of housing uses. You have single-family residential, R1, lower density, and then you have one- and two-family residential and built-as-duplex, R2A and R2B, along with some minor pockets of R3, uh, limited multiple-family. And then you can kind of see the, uh, abundance of commercial activity surrounding the site to the east. You have Target, Petco, um, Discount Tire, US Bank, Menards, and, uh, strip, a few strip malls along that intersection. And we became aware that Metronic was going to move on from their corporate campus, uh, late '22, I believe. And we collaborated with their, uh, the listing broker, but also kind of expressed that we didn't really have any specific direction for this site because the comp plan assumed that Metronic would stay the, uh, primary owner and operator, and so the site was only guided for commercial. So to do anything besides commercial activity, we had to take, um, a comprehensive plan amendment through the process. And we engaged the consultant that had prepared the 2040 comprehensive plan, so they were extremely familiar with our city. They had done the legwork and the engagement to prepare the 2040 plan. Um, so there was a lot of synergy there in having them do the comp plan amendment. And some of the key drivers that, um, influenced this site in particular are the upcoming, uh, Bus Rapid Transit F-line that will end up serving 53rd. Sullivan Lake is identified as an impaired water body. There is a largely impervious surface, uh, coverage of the lot, just because it was previously used as a corporate campus. 600-some parking spots, so is a large parking lot and a building. And then there are a presence of invasive species, which has kind of come up in the EAW as well. And then just some other economic drivers. You know, retail, commercial activity depends on a certain degree of visibility. And the further you get away from 53rd and Central, the more and, more inward towards the property you get, the less feasible that becomes, which is why the only commercial space being shown is on the northern building along, uh, 53rd. Other factors are a depressed office market, um, largely since COVID. That has been a market that has struggled to recover. And so the demands for reu, using the existing office space simply isn't there. And then there is a listing price of $12 million, which will include the teardown, um, of the existing building. And so with that price point in mind, there's a minimum density range required of at least 400 units to make the economics kind of pencil out. And so we held, um, a staff meeting in October of '26, or '23, and then, um, held a joint session between the planning commission and the city council the next month in November of '23. And that's where really where we kind of talked about the different concepts that are shown in the comparison. And then, just to get some preliminary feedback on the core design and land use elements that would kind of guide this as we kind of take it further. Uh, some of the core redevelopment parameter, parameters that were identified include lower-density housing towards Sullivan Lake and then scaling that intensity up the further you get away from the lake and closer to 53rd and Central. Higher-density housing away from the lake, basically stepping up that intensity from townhomes. And then the further you get towards the streets, um, you would see more dense housing. Six stories is the maximum for the higher-density residential, including parking. Once you get beyond six stories, the cost of construction, uh, increases pretty dramatically. So six is kind of that sweet spot, I, I would say. Minimum of 400 units for the apartments is acknowledged with a targeted density range between 450 and 600 units. And again, that the commercial activity gets more limited and less feasible the further you get from the street. Uh, another component that was described as priority is public accessibility to the lake edge and a desire to invite activity to the water feature and lake. Stormwater features incorporated into the street were received really positively and commented on doing a good job of integrating the public and private spaces. Um, improving multimodal transportation is a major parameter of this project. As I mentioned, the, uh, upcoming BRT line, F-line is gonna be coming. And there are opportunities to incorporate, um, co, close connectivity gaps between east and west along 52nd Avenue to expand pedestrian and bike facilities. And then the other two were basically in relation to Sullivan Lake. Uh, there's a desire to expand and/or reimagine Sullivan Lake Park to have some degree of public gathering, such as seating or other pedestrian-scale amenities incorporated with the water and stormwater features, public art components, the need for updated facilities and parking, more in alignment with the types of programming desired were discussed. Parks and Rec Commission, within the last few months, recently passed a master plan, uh, for Sullivan Lake Park. So that's kind of the expectation that we get as close to that as we can. And then last, uh, improving the environmental condition of Sullivan Lake Park as a impaired water body is explicitly identified as a priority, is an expectation just with the stormwater and traffic issues that exist that the applicant would be collaborating with, uh, the Mississippi Watershed Organization and Minnesota Department of Transportation. And we've tried to engage those partners as early as possible on this project. And this was kind of after the public engagement that we did, um, through the comp plan process in the beginning of '24. We basically took four concepts, distilled them down to two concepts. And then based on the, uh, feedback that was given on the two concepts, which are included in your packet as part of the, um, comp plan amendment that was submitted and authorized, this is kind of the preferred concept for the redevelopment. It shows the largest amount of commercial and retail, 16,000 square feet. It is kind of at the mid-range of, uh, the density that was described, that 450 to 600. Uh, it shows 440 high-density townhome, or housing units, and then 50 rowhouse townhome units. This isn't what the applicant is proposing. This is just the redevelopment parameter that the Metropolitan Council approved for the comp plan amendment. So this was just kind of setting those parameters of what the comp plan guides the site for. And with that, this is the, uh, app, this is what the applicant's proposing. Um, as you can kind of see, if we go... I don't know if I can go.
Can you hit back at all?
Anyway. Um, along the northern side of the site, you see the fourth phase, which is a speculative mixed-use with the, uh, market rate, um, 150 to 7, 175 apartment comp, uh, units. Thank you. That's fine, I can just get back there. You're good. Um, the first two phases would be the L-shaped buildings in the center. Uh, those are 134 units with parking, um, below and then surface as well. Um, the end, the expectation would be that those two phases, along with the utility and any infrastructure needs, would occur first, with then the third phase being the townhomes that you kind of see along the perimeter of the site. And then the fourth, um, phase would be that northern end, the non-income-restricted mixed-use commercial and market rate apartments. This is just kind of more of a site plan view of it with setbacks showing some of the, um, just the configuration of the parking, the access, and then each of the buildings. And with that, I can kind of start going through. The first two apartment buildings are in the center of the subject property, and they essentially share zero lot lines because there is a building control joint connecting the two structures. And essentially what that means is it's nonusable space that essentially allows the buildings to settle in a certain way, independent of each other, but still kind of sharing that same property line. Um, the parking lots that, uh, but the property line of future phases of development are separated. And then these are just kind of the proposed setbacks. Um, I used R4, multiple-family zoning, just because general business does not allow for housing. So it didn't really make sense to use, uh, zoning district that doesn't have any of those uses allowed in examination of the building and the parking setbacks. So one-two family parking setbacks, building setbacks are, um, 15 feet from the front, 10 feet from the side, 15 feet from the corner side, and the rear is 15 feet. And then with parking setbacks, uh, largely for one-two family and multifamily, they are similar in, in the front yard setback, but then you kind of see differences as you get into the side yard, the corner, and the rear. Um, the first two phases have unique setbacks. As I mentioned, they are sharing a zero lot line. They are located centrally in the project and would essentially abut the other two phases. Um, so they are showing phase one would have a building, uh, front yard setback of 80 feet, no side yard setback because they share that lot line and they're kind of connected through that building control joint. Um, the corner side yard setback is proposed to be fif, or 10 feet. And then the rear setback for the, um, would be 80 feet for the building. And then for phase one, parking, front yard setback is anticipated to be 10 feet. Uh, no parking setback for the side yard, again, just because it is abutting the property line. And just because this is kind of a reconfiguration of a larger site, it doesn't necessarily have the same conflict points that you would in a normal zoning district. And so that just kind of takes us to the other phases. Um, phase two, the other northern L-shaped building is proposing a, uh, building setback of 10 feet, uh, side yard setback of 80 feet, corner side yard setback of 80 feet, and a rear setback of 80 feet. Townhomes, um, those largely meet the expectations. 25 feet for the front yard, 25 feet for the drive. No side yard setback, just because they are attached townhome units, so they're similar to the apartment building. There isn't that, like, setback between the buildings. And then, um, along the rear yard, they're greater than 50 feet. The last phase, that is the building that is closest to the street. The front of the building is pointed towards the first two phases, so that's showing it larger setback in the front. The rear would be considered around, um, abutting 53rd, and that's showing a 15-foot setback. And then parking has, uh, for the mixed-use building, it's gonna be largely underground, but also with some surface parking that doesn't have a front yard setback, proposing a 10-foot side and corner side yard setback and the 30-foot, uh, rear yard setback for the parking there. Lot area, the property is currently 11.74 acres and the applicant will need to acquire 0.16 acres of city parkland to make the development configuration work. The proposed lot areas and widths are described below, with the R4 standards being a minimum lot area of 10,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 70 feet. Um, all these parcels are larger than an acre and show widths of at least 380 feet. So we are pretty comfortable that this meets, um, the base zoning requirements. And the plat is showing an impervious surface coverage exceeding the 35% maximum in the shoreline overlay district, and that will require, um, a variance to be per, to be permitted, just to allow for that kind of configuration. Parking. The site plan shows four phases, with the first two including two identical L-shaped apartment buildings containing 134 units. These are, intend to be identical in configuration and unit counts, um, with underground and surface parking. The third phase would include the townhomes, uh, with tuck-under garages and then standalone and shared driveways. And then the last phase would be the mixed-use, uh, market rate apartments with 150 to 175 units and 12,000 square feet of speculative commercial space. And then this just gives you a breakdown of how those, uh, L-shaped buildings are gonna be configured. The mixed use is not necessarily defined at this point, just because that is the most up-in-the-air phase, um, of the development. But as you can see, the L-shapes will contain 11 one-bedroom, two, uh, or 51 two-bedrooms, 63 bedrooms, and 12 four-bedrooms for a total unit count of 134 for each of the two buildings. And this is just kind of a breakdown of the uses. Single-family townhomes, multifamily, two, uh, 22 one-bedroom, uh, multifamily, 224 two-or-more bedroom, and then the mixed rate with the commercial space that is speculative. Just so we kind of have a basis for what the, um, minimum parking requirements are and then what is being proposed. For the townhomes, a minimum of two enclosed garage spaces are required. For one-bedroom multifamily units, one enclosed garage space is required. Two-or-more-bedroom multifamily units require two spaces with one of these being enclosed. And then the mixed rate, uh, the mixed use market rate and commercial, we needed to, because the end user for the commercial space is not defined, um, the base kind of minimum parking requirement for a lot of our commercial uses is one space for every 300, uh, square feet gross floor area. And so just with the user not being defined yet, that's what we wanted to use just as a base. What, what can we expect for the minimum parking requirements for commercial space? And then that would also be understood that there would be an opportunity to do a joint parking agreement, um, because that is allowed in city code, um, with uses that kind of mixed use in particular, where they share spaces. Um, and with market rate apartments kind of being considered having more amenities, the expectation would be a combination of underground and surface parking. Um, the proposed parking for the townhomes is two enclosed garage spaces, it has a tuck-under garage, and then each unit would have two driveway spaces as well. Some of those are standalone, others are shared. Um, for the multifamily buildings, there are 432 total stalls for phases one and two, uh, total of 268 units, with each building having 134 enclosed spaces and 82 surface per building. Bare minimum, they are required to provide one enclosed space for every unit that they provide. And then any, uh, unit counts are two bedrooms or more, they are able to provide surface parking in addition to that one enclosed required spot. Minimum parking ratio, city council at sole discretion cannot go below 1.5 parking spaces per unit. Uh, there are 1.6 stalls proposed per one unit for the first two phases. The expectation is that no future phase can dip below 1.5. And there are a total of 675 parking spaces with 250 stalls at grade and 420 parking spaces underground proposed. As I mentioned, city code allows provisions for joint parking between mixed, multi-use structures and proof of parking, showing that the anticipated parking demand will be met if the future potential, uh, use generates additional parking demands. Like, say if a grocer or a more intensive, um, parking-demanding use w, were to come in, that would change the parking requirements. Um, as part of the first, the PUD, the city can accept the amount of parking provided for the first three phases of development with the understanding that the specific unit count and breakdown of the mixed-use building and the end user of the commercial space will further, will further determine what the parking requirements are. The parking spaces vary in size, with the, most of the spaces being undersized. Uh, nine feet, um, by 18 feet compared to nine feet by 20 feet, and contain drive aisles with 24 feet in width. As part of the PUD, um, there is flexibility in the number of compact to regular parking spaces that are provided. And at this point, um, as part of the PUD, we're comfortable with the amount of spots provided. And just, I want to take a brief pause, just see if you guys have any questions at the moment, or if we want to keep going. Can't steal the... Oh, you're good. Okay. You're good. Um, so this, the, this project and the described scope meets the mandatory threshold for an environmental assessment worksheet. And as part of that process, a traffic impact study was required. Um, vehicle intersection, turning movements, and then bicycle and pedestrian counts were collected at the following locations on Wednesday, April 9th, from 7:00 AM to four, uh, 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, basically to capture what the peak AM and PM demands are like, um, at each of the locations, as well as 13-hour counts from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, as indicated. And the intersections that were, uh, examined were 53rd and University, 53rd and Monroe, 53rd and the West Site Target Access, 53rd and the East Site Target Access, 53rd and US Bank Access, 53rd Discount Tire slash West Starbucks Access, 53rd and Bank of America slash East Starbucks Access, and then 53rd and Central Avenue. And the roadway is observed can be described as follows. Uh, University Avenue, Highway 47, this is a four-lane divided minor arterial roadway with left and right turn lanes. There are no multimodal facilities except for transit stops at the 53rd Avenue intersection. And the average speed miles per hour is approximately 50. Central Avenue, uh, Highway 65, it's generally a four-lane divided minor arterial roadway with left and right turn lanes, a multi-use trail along the west side of, uh, the roadway north of 53rd and sidewalk along both sides of the roadway, south of 53rd Avenue, with a transit stop in the southwest quadrant of that intersection. Forty mile per av, uh, 40 mile-per-hour speed limits. And then finally, 53rd, generally a two-lane divided major collector roadway west of the Target Access with limited turn lanes and a two-lane divided roadway east of the Target Access with dedicated turn lanes. Uh, there's a multi-use trail along the south side of the roadway and a sidewalk along the north. Metro Transit Route 10 serves 53rd in 30-minute increments that run through most of the day. And then 30 mile-per-hour speed limits with the roadway, uh, recently reconstructed in '23. And just kind of to describe what the traffic study is examining, there's a concept called levels of service, which are basically used to examine how intersections operate using, uh, vehicle queues, traffic, pedestrian, and bicyclist volumes, traffic controls, peaking characteristics, and then other observable driver behaviors. And then these, uh, levels of service are essentially graded on a A-to-F system, with A indicating the best traffic operation, F indicating that demand exceeds capacity. And with this, uh, traffic study, there are some assumptions that are made with the side-street stop control intersections. Um, basically, those are not able to be examined the same way that a main-line road can be. And so there's some consideration that has to be given to the overall intersection level of service, the total number of vehicles entering compared to the capability of the intersection to support the volumes, and then just the... intersection to support the volumes, and then just the acknowledgement that based on how they're configured, delays exist on the minor approach as the mainline does not have to stop. And so that's why most delays are attributed to the side-street approaches. Is typical of intersections with higher mainline traffic volumes to experience higher levels of delay or poor levels of service EF on the side-street approaches, but an acceptable overall intersection level of service during peak hour conditions. Basically, the understanding that peak hour, you're going to have your highest demands and there are certain configurations, specifically signal-controlled intersections, that can make those delays longer. And the existing capacity analysis is summarized in the table below. Basically, those are the intersections that we've talked about, whether they are controlled by a signal, a side-street stop, a roundabout. And then you can kind of see with the side-street stops and the roundabout, they typically have the best level of service, whereas those stop-controlled side-street approaches are what cause the delay for the most part. The table shows all study intersections and approaches generally operate at an acceptable level of D or better during typical weekday AM/PM peak hours. The eastbound approach of Fifty-third at both University and Central operate near the D and E threshold during the PM peak hour, although those operations are relatively common and don't typically require mitigation. There was peak westbound queues along Fifty-third from University that can extend approximately three hundred feet during the PM peak hour. That's approximately ten to fifteen vehicles and typically requires one signal cycle length to process or just move that trap, that queue through. And this is just going further into the traffic study. We use land use types to create trip generations. Basically, and on what can a proposed development cause in terms of trip generation compared to the previous use? We wanted to compare what this use would be in its peak demands compared to Metronix's use as a full corporate campus with a greater peak demand as an office, a corporate office building. You can kind of expect that most people are going to arrive and depart at roughly the same time. But it was more valuable to essentially examine what the prior use was at its most intense because frankly, there isn't really any value towards examining the amount of traffic that a vacant lot generates. The trip generation estimate was used, was created using the ITE Trip Generation Manual and includes trips for typical weekday AM and PM peak hours as well as kind of the daily totals shown below. The previous use was a one hundred and forty-four thousand square foot office building with approximately six hundred and five parking spaces. This generated an estimated one thousand five hundred and sixty daily trips, seven hundred and eighty in, seven hundred and eighty out. The under, the expectation is nobody's going to be living at a corporate campus and that everyone is going to leave at the end of the day. The estimated AM peak hours are seven-thirty to eight-thirty with peak hour generating two hundred and nineteen trips. And then the PM peak hour is described as five to six, generating two hundred and seven trips. And this coincides with the peak demands of those roadways. You know, the largest traffic demands are going to occur during the morning commute and the evening commute, and I think that's reflected here. In consideration of the proposed redevelopment, there are a couple things that apply to this kind of project just because it is considered transit-oriented development. A ten percent multi-use reduction is only applied to the mixed-use building on the north. To the retail portion, to account for residents are expected to patronize the retail use. If you have a commercial space surrounded by a bunch of density, is assumed that people living there will use that to some degree. And then a five percent modal reduction is applied to all trips to account for multimodal transportation such as transit, walk or bike trips as a transit-oriented development project. As I mentioned previously, the commercial space is speculative retail for the purposes of the summary and may require further analysis depending on what the end user is. Say if it's a large-scale grocer or like daycare, the different uses are going to have different trip generations. The proposed redevelopment is estimated to generate three thousand trips daily, fifteen hundred in and fifteen hundred out with an estimated generation of two hundred and thirty-nine AM peak hour trips and two hundred and eighty-two PM peak hour trips. But the expectation is that those people are going to have very different schedules and be arriving and departing differently than a corporate campus where everyone is arriving and leaving typically at the same time. This would cause a lower peak demand considering the fixed hours versus those more variable hours of a residence. Results of the no-build and build conditions indicate that all intersections and approaches will generally continue to operate at an low level of service D or better during peak AM and PM hours. Overall changes based on the build and no-build conditions range from an increase of two to four seconds without any changes to the existing timing. The westbound queue along Fifty-third Avenue from University are expected to increase by about fifty to seventy-five feet during the peak periods, two to four vehicles because of the proposed redevelopment. These queues are expected to increase from three hundred to approximately three seventy-five to four hundred feet during these PM peak hour demands with monitor queuing expected at a couple access approaches. And you can kind of see, again, the intersections that are controlled by signals are typically where we see the lower levels of service. The ones that aren't don't necessarily have those same issues. Left and/or right turn lanes along Fifty-third Avenue at the West Side Access or a right turn lane along Fifty-third Avenue at the East Side Access have the potential to reduce potential conflicts, but does not appear to provide much operational benefit and could result in increased vehicle speeds and/or longer pedestrian crossing distances. Since the adjacent roadway network can support the proposed redevelopment, no additional infrastructure changes are required to maintain the current intersection capacity. And the applicant is strongly encouraged to coordinate with MINDOT to identify opportunities to improve the traffic and safety conditions, including potential changes to the roundabout. MINDOT has expressed a willingness to kind of work with us on this project and see what the redesign of Central Avenue, how that plays into this, and if there are things that the traffic study can essentially help MINDOT support, at least narratively. From my understanding, there are some recommendations that the traffic plan identified regarding landscaping signage, multimodal connections to ensure connectivity with existing and proposed facilities, truck maneuverability, basically can trucks serving the property, specifically garbage trucks, make the turning maneuvers necessary? And then are there opportunities to align the northern east-west driveway aisles between the townhomes and the multifamily buildings to reduce potential conflicts and then preserve the ability to connect the proposed redevelopment with an extension of Fifty-second Avenue? Basically, the consensus is that as long as some of these intersections are controlled by signals, they're going to continue to have the same issues regardless of what goes on there. And that this could actually support what MINDOT needs to kind of move forward with upsizing, you know, the roundabout or just any other identified traffic changes that can be made with this. I just kind of want to take another second to pause. Any of the commissioners have any questions at this point about traffic, parking? All right, I'll just keep going then. Vehicle, pedestrian, and bicycle access. The site will be served by the two existing entrances on the south side of Fifty-third Avenue and configured to the public works engineering specifications while also incorporating MINDOT feedback. Internal access to the site is proposed through private drivelanes and there are no proposed city streets in this project area. MINDOT provide review comments on how the development's proposed access aligns with Central Avenue reconstruction and requests that the applicant continue to work with their internal staff. We've been engaged pretty extensively with MINDOT in a variety of forms, and so it's kind of nice that we have that kind of working relationship where they, you know, want to improve the, this area as much as we do. The intention is to eventually construct a multi-lane roundabout on Fifty-third to address the level of service issues because from MINDOT's perspective, those levels of service are going to continue to operate at an E and F so long as the approach uses the signal. I think a good example is kind of the feedback that we heard during the car wash consideration with that kind of intersection front road. There's a lot of essentially maneuvers that are trying to be happened and any sort of delay just kind of magnifies those problems so long as the signals exist. The site will be required to adhere to the city's complete streets policy requiring projects to identify the users of a project area and the modes of tran, modes of transportation that they use. If there are identified conflict points or if the area is referenced in a citywide plan such as like a transportation safety action plan or if there's anything in our comprehensive plan that identifies very specific, you know, conflict points. If there are languages spoken other than English and whether there are opportunities to complete connectivity gaps for pedestrian, bicycle, and transit units, users. Minnesota Highway sixty-five, Central Avenue is identified as a regional bicycle transportation corridor and has several transit routes in operation. There is a new BRT Route F planned. Both intersections at Central and Fifty-second have a level one top score on priority area walking study. Basically, combined with the area being guided for transit-oriented development, the expectation is that there is going to be a considerable amount of pedestrian and bicycle traffic anticipated. It was expressed to us by MINDOT, the connectivity for the existing trail to connect to Highway sixty-five is desired. The additional coordination would be required with the cities of Columbia Heights and Fridley, who we've engaged, the developer and MINDOT to build a trail extension with the 2028 construction project. But there are some major grade difficulties that kind of present challenges to that that would have to be accommodated in the development plans. MINDOT has also identified the need for a safe and comfortable crossing of Highway sixty-five, and this may include countermeasures such as a pedestrian hybrid beacon, high-visibility crosswalks, and pedestrian-level lighting. The town, the development will be required to provide sidewalks or shared youth path, use paths or trails to provide access to the townhomes, multifamily buildings, and connectivity to Sullivan Lake Park. As I mentioned earlier, one of the core redevelopment frameworks is prioritizing and emphasizing these multimodal connections to ensure that the existing and proposed facilities connect to the park as part of these park improvements. Park dedication and usable open space, the proposed plat will not include a park dedication. Instead, the applicants will be expected to make a financial contribution and/or build out amenities from the master plan that was approved for Sullivan Lake Park to satisfy this requirement, which would be included in the development contract. The improvements to the park will be reflective of the master planning that the Parks and Rec Commission recently approved. The residential areas of the two L-shaped buildings will include private patios and tot lots as well as a courtyard amenity space above the enclosed parking spaces. The project is anticipated to include expansions of trails and walkways as well as anticipated little over two hundred thousand square feet of open, common open and green space. These park improvements, as I mentioned, will be expected to be defined as part of the physical development contract as required of the PUD process. Essentially, if the PUD is approved, that starts a sixty-day clock where a signed development contract has to be formalized. There are no commercial uses in need of loading or unloading or receiving large deliveries proposed at this time, which would require compliance with the city's off-street loading requirements. Is a city code requirement that any non-residential use that receives or distributes materials or merchandise by trucks or similar vehicles and has a gross floor area of five thousand square feet is subject to off-street loading requirements. So when the commercial space has a defined end user, that tenant will be required to meet parking standards, dimensional standards for loading berths, location, and access by designating a loading zone. Fridley provided comments saying that they would like to not encourage use of Fifty-third for any loading or unloading activities, so that's an expectation that we would continue. The applicant should also consider identifying specific loading and unloading areas for residents to move in and out of the apartment buildings. That's just kind of the need for apartment buildings, so that's kind of an expectation we want to put forth. Landscaping and screening, including trash handling areas and mechanical equipment. The proposed landscaping plan shows a total of a hundred and twelve trees, including a mix of deciduous trees, evergreen trees, and ornamental trees. The size, diameters, and soil volumes are going to be required to meet city code requirements. Soil volumes, that's, the tree preservation replanting standards is kind of a newer thing, but it was important to kind of have some tools to ensure, A, that, you know, we guarantee healthy, mature canopies, and B, that we have some sort of security just to ensure that the plantings at least survive the first two years. The remaining area will be covered with mulch, stormwater seed mixture, and turf sod. Mechanical screening, if it is being placed on the rooftops, it has to comply with the city's screening requirements as a condition of approval. Trash handling areas are shown for the two L-shaped buildings just outside of the parking garage. We've been provided turning diagrams which are attached to the packet just confirming that a garbage truck, fire truck can make the necessary maneuvers. If the trash is not located within the underground parking garage, then it has to be enclosed on at least three sides by an opaque screening wall or fence no less than six feet in height with the open side of the enclosure not facing any public street or public yard of adjacent property as a condition of approval. That's just big city code requirement. And then just an idea of what the higher kind of schematic level landscape plan is going to look like. You know, this will kind of get more defined through the physical development contract and as the different phases come in, they'll be expected to kind of meet the higher overarching landscape plan that this sets. Utility connections and easements, the site is served by existing utilities, but will have to have utility capacity increase to accommodate the additional demand. Existing utilities such as water main, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and small utilities such as electric lines, natural gas, and communication lines will be removed as necessary to accommodate the new project. The project will include the extension and installation of utilities to serve the site with water main anticipated to be extended from the existing location within Fifty-third to the south into the project site providing water service and then connecting back to the main in Fifty-third, providing a loop system through the sites. The sanitary sewer will be extended into the site from the existing sewer in the south portion of the site. It appears that all of the surrounding sanitary sewer lines flow into an existing lift station just off the southwest corner of the site and is the expectation that that will be upsized to accommodate the additional load. Other utilities such as electric, gas, and communication cables will also be installed. The applicant has provided a utility plan showing the new connections that are upsized and run through the subject property along the adjacent properties before extending and looping into Fifty-third. Detailed plans will be required once a building permit has been applied for, and the anticipation is that the utility construction will occur in phase one and last several months with the building construction lasting one and a half to two years. Drainage. As the previous use contained an office building and large parking lot, that's a commercial use precedent for this site. Basically, because the building also contained a large parking lot to accommodate the kind of parking needs that they had, there was very little green space for stormwater treatment with the existing lot runoff draining directly to Sullivan Lake with relatively no treatment. Stormwater management is required for the development and the stormwater management plan is showing three proposed underground infiltration storage vaults, an infiltration, filtration basin to increase the amount of volume control and the retention necessary to contain runoff on-site with no increase to the total amounts of phosphorus or suspended solid states. As I mentioned before, is a major redevelopment parameter to improve the overall health and condition of Sullivan Lake. There's currently no existing treatment on-site. So basically, by providing any degree of stormwater management, that will improve the proposed rates from the existing rates and reduce runoff volume and improve water quality. Some of the stormwater features that are called out include grates, ponding areas, outlet control structures that provide for pretreatment, skimming for floatables and oils, and then dead storage volumes for sellable solids. The Metropolitan Council has a climate vulnerability assessment tool, which has shown a flood risk on the existing site mainly within the existing stormwater pond in the southeast. But after reviewing FEMA flood maps and the wetland delineation, it shows the site to be outside the one-hundred-year flood zone with flood risks from Sullivan Lake being minimal. Flooding impacts can be mitigated with the proposed development by stormwater management and building elevations, including setting the elevations above the hundred-year high-level water levels of adjacent ponds. And the ponds contain over- And the ponds contain overflows with which outlet to sedimentation basins prior to flowing off-site. Should we get higher rainfall torrential type events that have kind of like occurred in the last few days? With green spaces and landscaping offering additional opportunity for pretreatment. I think anyone who has kind of lived or been around that area understands how the site does or doesn't handle water. And so those are very apparent, even, you know, just visibly. And this is just kind of showing, it's tough to see what the rate volumes are, but it's just showing the underground storage vaults, the infiltration filtration, and then kind of digging into the amount of impervious that's being added. It is a net increase of approximately, I think, one-point-six acres is what it came out to. As required by the NPDS permit, a stormwater pollution prevention plan is required. A SWIP is a very basic development requirement, and it describes the nature of the construction activity, addresses the potential for sediment and pollutant discharges from the site, identifies personnel to oversee implementation, identifies permanent stormwater management systems, and identifies inspection and maintenance practices. They'll be required to provide an erosion control plan, which will implement stormwater best practice, management best practices, such as minimizing disturbed areas, perimeter silt fences, redundant silt fences along wetlands, temporary sediment ponds, erosion blankets, and reestablishing vegetation within seven days of completing grading activities. The project is not anticipated to negatively affect downstream water bodies. Stormwater, storm sewer will collect runoff from the site, and the runoff is required to be treated per the city and the watershed requirements. We have engaged the watershed district and MINDOT as early as possible, because the expectation is that the applicant collaborates with those two entities to kind of see what opportunities and configurations can be made to stormwater and traffic as applicable and feasible. Some other requirements are required by the MPCA stormwater permit include that the first inch of runoff from any new impervious surface is required to be infiltrated or infiltrated on-site. Stormwater runoff rates are required to be limited to be equal or two or less than the existing conditions. And then the water quality treatment methods will include, be included to reduce pollutant loads such as phosphorus, nitrogen, and total suspended states in runoff, which are some of the things that Sullivan Lake is called out as containing. I just kind of want, do we have any questions, commissioners, at this point? And some other site plan-related items that are just kind of addressed on the high-level end, but are more appropriate as we kind of get into the further phasing of it. The applicant has provided examples of the potential options for building design materials for exterior elevations such as glass, brick, cast stone, fiber cement, metal, and has provided color palettes and roofing types just to show the general materials that could be used. But the expectation is that high architectural quality material is expected to add value to the neighborhood. Sign drawings will be required at later dates. As part of the comprehensive plan amendment process, we actually eliminated the floor area ratio requirement. So that is not necessarily applicable here, but what that is, is a unit of measurement used to measure a building footprint compared to the overall site. Lot one is proposing a floor area ratio of two-point-eights. Lot two is proposing two-point-four, and Lot three is proposed a three-point-three floor area ratio coverage. The townhomes don't contain that measurement, just because that's not how you use that measurement. So that was not something that we looked at. But the floor area ratios as presented are consistent with the metropolitan or the comprehensive plan goals. The applicant will be required to submit a photometric lighting plan complying with city code and following recommendations from Minnesota DNR to use Minnesota DOT-approved products. Those are kind of products that are more sensitive to, you know, sensitive environmental areas or just being very conscious that, you know, the amount of lighting proposed doesn't spill over to adjacent properties. And so that's what the photometric plan would show. And then finally, a noise study was also conducted to understand what impacts this development could have on adjacent properties, as well as how the existing noise levels and sources in the area, primarily from Central Avenue, would affect the development. And there are some specific configurations and building requirements that were identified in the environmental assessment worksheet based on what needs to happen for the building to comply with the MPCA residential noise standards. Kind of going back to the car wash, we can't approve anything that automatically, you know, exceeds that noise level. And so that mitigation is going to be required per what is outlined in the EAW. And density per acre is proposed at forty-nine units per acre. This is, I just wanted to include comparisons to the project at eight-twenty-five Forty-second Avenue Northeast.
Coal, right.
That is a very comparable density, but as you can tell, that was sixty-two units on a one-and-a-quarter-acre property. This is forty-nine units per acre on a much larger, almost twelve-acre parcel. For reference, this building included, what was it, a hundred and some per acre? Over a hundred units per acre. So the density is not as intense as this, and I would even say not to the degree that the coal is either. This just kind of gives you the unit breakdown that we discussed earlier. The total number of units, four-hundred-and-forty-three apartments, fifty-eight townhomes, and five-hundred total, five-hundred-and-one total units. And with the roadways, utility easements, anything that is kind of minus from that buildable area, that's how we get the ten-point-four acres and approximately forty-nine units per acre. As part of the PUD process, we are required to send out notifications to the surrounding property owners within three-hundred-and-fifty feet of the subject site, as well as the entirety of the townhome developments adjacent to the property. The notice was also posted in Life Newspaper on the city's website and social media accounts, and I believe a code-red message was also sent. A neighborhood meeting was held on May twenty-first and was well-attended with approximately forty to fifty to sixty people attending. The sign-up sheet, mailer mailing list, and the list of comments received are attached to the packet. And just to kind of go over some of the concerns that we received were regarding the townhome configuration, the park configuration and how that fits into the project, the type of park improvements that can be expected and how the trail will be modified. And then there are specific concerns regarding traffic, stormwater, and drainage, safety, and then the overall site density as major issues. We received four written comments from residents within the project mailing range and a few phone calls from residents outside of that range. And if it's all right, I'd just like to kind of read through these comments as they were submitted. Anne, resident of seven-sixty-two Parkside Lane, expressed concerns that the issues with traffic and parking on Gould and Peters from this project could spill over to the new development without adequate parking. And noted issues with the density, lack of green space, environmental and traffic concerns, along with a lack of past adherence to development contracts as concerns. Chris Junker of seven-ninety-three Parkside Lane expressed disappointment in being unable to participate in the virtual portion of the neighborhood meeting. We did experience some tech issues, just kind of using a space that we don't typically use. Staff reached out to the resident to provide follow-up information that was presented, and then just see if they wanted to have a one-on-one, whether that's an in-person meeting, a phone call, however, they felt comfortable communicating just so that they could kind of get the same opportunity to make their voice heard and participate that other residents got to in the neighborhood meeting. One-on-one wasn't necessary. I've tried to stay in contact. Rebecca Wachowski, did I say her? Thank you. Of six-eighty-seven Sullivan Drive, expressed concerns about the scope of development proposed with specifics regarding the water table and flood risks, parking, traffic, public transit, and safety concerns related to Central and Fifty-third. And then just the overall desire for a less intense use, more passive, as well as explicit concerns over flooding, as I mentioned earlier. And then the last written comment that we received was from Tracy Severson of forty-one-eighteen Monroe Street. And she expressed concerns over the density, the traffic and the transit capacity, community infrastructure needs, and then safety concerns related to traffic and multimodal users. With preliminary plats, we're required to have, provide findings of fact. First, that the preliminary plat conforms to the requirements of City Code Section nine-point-one-one-six, the subdivision ordinance. In review of the plat that was submitted, staff finds that the plat generally conforms to the subdivision ordinance for a planned unit development. Second is that the proposed subdivision is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan supports the redevelopment of this site in addition to supporting a mixed-use and transit-oriented development. With those in mind, the proposed subdivision is considered consistent with the comprehensive plan's goals. And third is that the proposed subdivision contains parcel and land subdivision layout that is consistent with good planning and site engineering design principles. We reviewed this to the subdivision ordinance and felt that the parcel and land layout are consistent with these principles. Furthermore, the site plan reduces the number of parcels or increases the number of parcels on the site and removes old easements. And the project also proposes to improve the area's stormwater management conditions essentially by creating treatment and infiltration opportunities where there were none. And then just increasing that amount of storage capacity that can occur on the site. For a planned unit development district plan, there are four findings that must be made before the city council can approve a district plan at council meeting. First is that the plan conforms to all applicable requirements of City Code nine-point-one-one-three, PUD District. This is consistent with the intentions of the PUD code language. Second is that the PUD plan is consistent with all, with the applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan. As I mentioned, this is an area that has been defined as an area of opportunity targeted for redevelopment to a transit-oriented development. This is consistent with the goals described in the comprehensive plan. Third is that the PUD district plan is consistent with any applicable area plan. As I mentioned, the area plan, as noted, identifies this as an area of opportunity for redevelopment and that the PUD plan minimizes any adverse impacts on property in the immediate vicinity and the public right-of-way. By using, utilizing underground and at-grade parking, front-on-street parking on Fifty-third and Central Avenue, the PUD district plan would minimize any potential impacts on property in the immediate vicinity and public right-of-way. Finally, rezoning to the PUD. This is very much covering the same parameters that we would have to review the subdivision to the comprehensive plan, that the amendment is consistent with the applicable provisions of the comp plan, that the amendment is in the public interest and not solely for the benefit of a single property owner, whether the zoning, whether the amendment is to change the zoning classification of a particular property, whether the use and classification within the general area of the property in question are compatible with the proposed classification. That's why we compared, you know, we wanted to look at R-four versus general business, because if we held this to the general business standards, it wouldn't meet that provision. And then finally, whether the amendment is to change the zoning classification of a particular property, has there been a change in the character or trend of development in the area of the property in question, which has taken place since the property was placed in its current zoning classification? The depressed office market, the issues with visibility, the further you get from Central and Fifty-third. Those all reflect the general trends that I feel like you've seen in development. And so we're comfortable, the, the four findings have been made. In summary and recommendations, the applicants are seeking approval of a preliminary plat, easement vacation, and rezoning to PUD, planned unit development district to construct two new six-story, hundred-and-thirty-two to a hundred-and-thirty-four year affordable multi-family buildings, a mixed-use building with twelve-thousand square feet of commercial space, and a range of a hundred-and-fifty to a hundred-and-seventy-five market-rate apartments, fifty-eight townhomes, and associated park and infrastructure improvements. The project will also include the demolition of the vacant office building and acquisition of parkland to accommodate the project. The units proposed to be brought online are four-hundred-and-forty-eight new apartment units ranging from one to four bedrooms. The site will utilize the underground parking and surface parking to accommodate the users of these as well as the commercial space. With that in mind, we're making a few different recommendations. First is recommendation of approval of the preliminary plat as presented and subject to the conditions outlined below. First is that all required state and local codes, permits, licenses, and inspections will be met and in full compliance. The applicant shall be responsible for the cost of filing and recording written easements with the Anoka County's Recorder's Office. An approved preliminary plat shall be valid for a period of one year from the date of the approval. In the event that a final plat is not presented for approval within this time period, basically a year from when the city council approves the preliminary plat, should they. The applicant would be required to submit a final plat within a year of that approval, otherwise the preliminary plat becomes void. And finally, the applicant shall enter into a developers' agreement with the city. Such development shall be reviewed by the city attorney. Next is the proposal to vacate one easement. Required document number one-three-three-zero-two-three-nine, providing for sanitary sewer on the property. The easement vacation is in, is necessary in order to accommodate the project. The applicant has provided legal descriptions of the easement to be vacated. And staff is recommending approval of the easement vacation subject to the conditions below. First, that the applicant shall be responsible for providing legal descriptions as they have for any the applicant shall be responsible for providing legal descriptions for all new easements that are subject to be created. Such descriptions are subject to be, to review by the city attorney, and then they are responsible for recording that easement vacation with Anoka County's Recorder's Office. By code, Plan Commission is required to hold an informal hearing related to the planned unit development. The Plan Commission shall make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council will hold the formal public hearing for approval of the PUD. Staff recommends approval of the PUD with the following conditions below. First is that the property owner and the city will enter into a development contract governing the site improvements and shall be executed by the property owner and city within sixty days of the PUD approval prior to the issuance of a building permit. Second, the mixed-use building containing the commercial space, a hundred-and-fifty to a hundred-and-seventy-five market-rate apartment units will provide underground and surface parking shared between the uses as a condition of approval, but once a specific end user is found for the commercial space, there will be a specific calculation, other requirements, once an end user is found. No loading and unloading shall occur on Fifty-third. Third, the developer shall provide financial guarantees in the form of an irrevocable letter of credit for landscaping and public improvements, including multimodal connections to the site to ensure connectivity to the existing and proposed facilities. The amount is, the guarantee amount is to be determined by the city engineer. Fourth is that the city engineer, the watershed district, and Minnesota Department of Transportation shall review and approve the site grading and stormwater management plans. All stormwater best practice, best management practices shall have designated drainage and utility easements recorded with the final plat or as a separate document with Anoka County. Five, the developer shall enter into a stormwater maintenance and management agreement with the city to be prepared by the city attorney. Six, the site utility plans shall be subject to review and final approval by the city engineer and fire chief. The developer shall pay any park dedication fees outlined, as outlined in the city code. The developer will provide record plans or as-built drawings to the city following project completion. And last is to align the northern, east-west driveway aisles between the northwest traffic townhomes and the multi-family apartment buildings to reduce potential conflicts between movements. And then basically, the PUD process allows flexibility in certain areas. Attached to this report is a draft ordinance amendment to allow the site to be rezoned to planned unit development with the following development standards that will serve as the base zoning district, zoning district standards. First, the minimum number of parking stalls per multi-family unit cannot fall below one-point-five spaces. The maximum density allowed, residential density allowed, is sixty-five units per acre. The minimum number of enclosed parking stalls per townhome unit is two. The building height shall not exceed six stories. A minimum of one enclosed parking stall is required per multi-family unit, that is a base city code requirement. Capping the maximum number of compact stalls at seventy percent. Establishing a minimum non-residential building area of twelve-thousand square feet. Essentially, if, for some reason, the Essentially, if, for some reason, the commercial component of this would fall through, or so not be desired any longer, that would require a comprehensive plan amendment similar to what we did to guide this site for transit-oriented development, to essentially remove the commercial use, which, that's not really our position at this point. The minimum number of townhome units is 50, is set 52. The maximum number of multifamily units is set at 450. And then, a minimum multifamily front yard setback of 10 feet, and a minimum multifamily parking setback of zero feet would be applied. So with that, I can take any questions and...
With that, we can take any questions from the commissioner. We also have the developer and some of the engineers in the crowd with us today, so they can kind of answer some of the questions, and then we can also turn it over to them to kind of finalize or any ending comments after that before we head to the, the public comment period. So we'll start with the commission's questions and from the developer. We can talk a little bit about the timeline as well, kind of next steps, and then we'll go to the public hearing process.
Oh yeah, I'll just, just to go back to traffic, because I know I travel that street a lot, and it is congested. But based off of the projections, basically, this development, the impact on traffic is basically negligible. Is that, that correct?
Do you want, yep, I think that we have, the staff could answer that, but it's best to have the traffic engineer talk a little more about it.
Hi, good evening. My name's Matt Posina, I'm president of TC2. We were kind of conducted to, or asked to conduct the traffic study for the proposed development. And so, to answer your chair...
Could you speak up just a little bit with the mic?
Yeah, is that better? Is it on now? Okay. Still not, not better? Talk louder? Check, check?
We've got you recorded, just time, yeah, yell into it a little bit.
All right, I'll do, I'll do my best. So, to answer your question, is it negligible? No, it's not negligible from a traffic impact perspective. It remains within industry standards for acceptable level of service and operations. So, yes, it's going to increase traffic from what's out there today. You know, there's a lot of unknowns yet and assumptions that go into the, the retail component of that, which makes up probably about 25% of that overall traffic, as, as a, as, as relative to the residential component. So, I'm happy to answer any other traffic-related questions that you might have, or...
If you can go to the next screen, I think that's the one that we are referencing, or one more, the one that showed before and after construction. One more, I think. Okay, I think one more. I believe this one, yes, build and no build. So it shows like, like almost a matter of seconds of a difference. I think that's, you know, what we just want to clarify is, you know, if you can explain how it doesn't really change, other than just a few seconds, as far as it goes pre-built to post-built?
Sure, so, Chair Commissioners, the question is, how, how does it only change a couple seconds? And so, I think when you look at the level of trip generation and how it disperses, so it's going to disperse relatively evenly to the east and to the west from the site, so west along 53rd and to the east. And so, when you look at that trip generation of being on the order of magnitude of about 200 cars, well, when that splits, half, you know, half in each direction, that ends up being about 100 cars, or about two additional cars for every minute. And so, when you think about how long it takes when you get up to the signal at either Highway 65, or on the university side over at Highway 47, that signal cycle length generally takes about a minute and a half to two minutes. And so, that change, that order of magnitude, really just kind of gets cleared out within that initial cycle, and it's pretty much within almost the daily variation of traffic at Target and things like that. And so, that's why the, yes, it adds traffic, it will increase the delays by a few seconds, but that's why it doesn't feel, or it stays within those acceptable standards, is it's just on, from an order of magnitude, it just isn't that great.
Then was, so you said half goes east, half goes west, that makes sense from like a, kind of more practical understanding, but in the implementation, or specifically for this location, east you have the highway, you have, you know, 694 right there, you have a lot of businesses, west you have university. So I wouldn't say it'd be 50/50, I mean, is that a number that you got from just like expectation, or is it currently 50/50?
It's very close to being 50/50 today, so we look at travel patterns at the different access points, like Target and things of that nature. And so, it ends up being, it's, it's actually, what we analyze is about 45 to the west, 55 to the east. And in general, I mean, I think you look about where the population centers, where the employment centers are, with downtown being to the south, university and central are both really popular routes to get to downtown, and it kind of depends on what traffic is looking like. And so, that's where we see, we take that into account when we're looking at that distribution of where traffic is going to go to and come from.
Makes sense.
Can you speak to the entrances to the potential new development? And I, I think the, the eastern one would lead you directly to 53rd to Central. Does the westernmost one, does that feed in directly to the roundabout that's currently there, or would there need to be some adjusted, adjustments made?
Sure, Chair Commissioners, the question is regarding the access. So, the east access is proposed as a right-in, right-out configuration. The west access would align with the, the western Target access. The roundabout is actually in between those two access points, so there wouldn't really be much of a change from the specific locations.
Thank you.
Actually, we can clarify that, I think one of the figures showed one way in and out, just the west one, and then of course, you know, the one we're looking at shows two. So is it going to be the two?
Madam Chair, members of the, yep, so the western access, as you can see, would be able to turn left or right, and then the eastern access is going to be only able to turn right on the way out.
Yep.
Can you just comment on how you think the traffic flow into this newly developed area would compare to, say, the traffic flow into the strip mall where there's a Chipotle on, on Central? And I, and many fellow Columbia Heights residents that I know of always go to the St. Anthony Chipotle instead of the Columbia Heights one, because it's, that intersection is awful, that parking is awful, it's so hard to get in and out of there. And I, I guess, I, and I would say the same about the Starbucks on 53rd and Central. The parking, it's just, it feels like kind of a disaster sometimes, so I, I worry a little bit that getting in and out would be very similar to that. Do you, do you have any thoughts on that?
Chair Commissioners, I can't speak to the exact Chipotle, I go to a different one usually, but from, from my perspective, with the improvements that were implemented along 53rd, with the median here over the last couple of years, that's really changed access and improved safety along the corridor since that was implemented. When those access points were full access points, there was a lot of conflicts, vehicles turning every which way. When you can convert those access points to right-in, right-out like they are, that's good access management, reduces conflicts, and, and we see that in the safety data since, since that has been implemented, the amount of crashes has significantly gone down in that specific area. And so, with the implementation of the roundabout, or a pseudo-roundabout, whatever you want to like to call that, even the traffic engineer doesn't exactly know what to call that, but it will actually help get ingress and egress. So if you're coming from university, or excuse me, from Central or Highway 65 and wanting to get into the site, you could actually use the roundabout to get into the eastern site access, so it'd be kind of that little U-turn maneuver, or you could continue to the west access. So there, does provide you some flexibility and improved operations and keeps, keeps vehicles operating pretty safely.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, just like to add on to that a little bit. We've been in, with our conversation with Mendat on the restructuring of Central Avenue, that is one of the intersections that they've identified as a, it is a major issue, and they've really been working with a lot of the businesses in that area to identify a plan to kind of make those, that intersection better. And I think like the engineer had said, sorry, I don't forget your name here, but Mendat is looking at cutting off 52nd at that area, so the new Central Avenue, right now, it is currently, when you go to leave Chipotle, you can take a right, or you can wait for the light, wait for a very long time, and then take a left or try and go straight. They're going to be putting a median right through there, so that is going to be converted to a right-in, right-out to kind of solve those, those situations. And that would direct people further south to a roundabout in which they can go back north, rather than kind of having all these people stacked up, it gives them that outflow and everything like that. So, just to kind of, Mendat has identified the same issue and solved it with similar, similar avenue.
I can just kind of add a little bit. The traffic study itself kind of calls out, as a recommendation, preserving the ability to connect the proposed redevelopment with an extension of 52nd. So I think we would try to solve for this as best as we can with this project or the
My question, as I've heard comments about, can we have a southern entrance into this development? Between the eastern edge of the property and Central Avenue, is that all privately-owned land, or is there governmental strip that could be used?
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, that is all privately-owned land. So, even with us working with the city of Fridley, Mendat, and those businesses to connect that trail on the southern part of the parcel to 52nd, kind of the reconstruction and everything like that, there's going to be a lot of work with those property owners, so it would really be up to those property owners to determine access and everything like that, which isn't really determinable at this time.
Are you able to speak at all to pedestrian traffic, specifically crossing, I'm thinking people crossing the road to go to Starbucks, or Target, or that kind of thing, and, and what, what we can implement as far as safety practices?
So Chair Commissioners, pedestrian safety is always very important. There is a, was part of the 53rd reconstruction project, there was a enhanced crossing that was implemented, what I'll say is the east site access, or the east Target access. That's a pretty safe crossing from a, from an engineering perspective. With a bunch of residential going in, we would expect a lot of cross-traffic. I believe there isn't an RFB there today at that crossing, but that'd be, would be something if, if activity increased beyond that, there could be the potential that you could implement additional, kind of the push buttons that flash at that location to help even enhance pedestrian safety even more.
And then, just as we kind of discussed earlier, Mendat has identified some potential countermeasures that could be deployed there, you know, the pedestrian hybrid, hybrid beacon, high-visibility crosswalks, and then pedestrian-level lighting.
I do have one more question, but it's not related to traffic.
Okay.
Okay, I, I was just curious, the developer, Cass Wilson, or Cos Wilson, architects on behalf of Lincoln Avenue Communities, do we have, do we know other similar developments that they've done locally that we can, like in the last five or 10 years, that we could compare to see like how it's doing and performing?
I can speak to that.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name's Kyle Brasser, I'm a vice president, regional partner with Lincoln Avenue Communities. We're the developer on the project, and Cos Wilson, as you mentioned, I have Christian Brogan here with Cos Wilson as well. Cos Wilson's the architect, they've designed dozens of multifamily communities around the metro area. I, he could come speak to those if you want, but to speak a little bit about myself and my organization, so I've been with Lincoln Ave for about four years. Prior to that, I've served for, in the development role for a couple of other Twin Cities developer, actually, I did the coal, the one, the reference, the development that was referenced earlier. So, my organization today no longer does that, but that's very representative of the types of developments that we do. And I work in a small part of the upper Midwest, which I live in Minnesota, but I also work in Wisconsin and Michigan, and my organization manages multiple communities in other Midwest states as well. So this is one of our first in Minnesota, but I've done several in Minnesota, I've been working in this for about 15 or so years, so. I'm happy to answer any other questions, or I can also sit down.
I guess I was just wondering if there's like a, a, a specific one that sort of models this one, that like we could just, like a development somewhere in the Twin Cities, like a specific one that you could mention, like, oh, there's one in the neighborhood of Fridley, you should go look at that.
Sure, so I, I mean, so to use, to use some examples of other types of, like, other developments I've worked on for other developers in the Twin Cities. In the city of Minneapolis, there are, I probably have done eight or so different ones in the city of Minneapolis. Now, to, to make that the most similar to this area of Columbia Heights, we don't have one that has all this, these exact fact patterns. Most of them are more typical, like a single apartment building on a single parcel, as, as opposed to the master plan type concept. But in the Riverside neighborhood of Minneapolis, there's a development called Luna Apartments. In, I mean, downtown Minneapolis is completely different, but there's Skyway Connected Sora Apartments. I'd be happy to also send like a follow-up with specific communities for you all to research, but sort of thinking off the top of my head, I'm trying to come up with the right. We, we did a development in Robinsdale, right along 142nd, it's, it's called the Reeve, it's adjacent to the water there, so that's another sort of, has some similarities with the water proximity. And then I've done other developments, like in Madison, Wisconsin, I'm going to leave the Twin Cities for a minute, but that have more of the master plan type, multiple buildings on a, on a site component, reconstructing city-county roads, which fortunately, we don't have to do that here, we're just simply connecting. But, you know, different soils conditions, different soils profiles, things like that, I have a lot of experience with in these general areas as well, so.
For the development of phases, what are your expectations, or, I guess this could be a city question too, but as far as the third and fourth phases, and let's say we get going and we have phase one and two are done, and now we kind of falter on phase three and four, what are your expectations for that? What is the city's expectations for that going forward, knowing that this will take several years?
Yes, yep, that's, that is the big question, I mean, that's, that's the question that everybody, including, you know, I have all the time, but what I will say is, we're working in partnership with a couple of different groups, actually, multiple probably right now, and we, we ultimately want to filter that down to sort of one additional market-rate developer to do the building along 53rd, and then a townhome group to do the townhomes. I'll, I'll tell you the ideal schedule, and then I can walk you through some of the variability that could exist. So, the two L-shaped buildings that the, that the, that city staff has, has put in front of you, in the center of the site are the two that we're going to sort of control the, the front end all the way through development on. Those both apply to the state of Minnesota for tax exempt bonds, and will apply in about, and it will apply in about a month for those two. If all goes according to plan, the soonest they could, these could possibly start would be like the beginning of next year, but I think more realistically, they'll start next summer. The goal is to start those two simultaneously, though we have discussed ways that if we are not fortunate to get the financing together, because it's state dictated and state, state timing and resources, we could start them six months or even a year apart. But ideally, ideally, they would both start by next summer, they'd take about 18 months to build. And then, the townhome developer that we're farthest along with candidly, they're sort of like chomping at the bit, they're ready to go. So I think they could start as soon as we could, and then the only real wild card is the market-rate development adjacent to 53rd, and even there, we have a couple of groups who are in the six-to-12-month range of when they could start. So I think realistically, the first shovels could be in the ground in 2026, and wrapping sometime in like 2028. But, to, to also circle back on something you mentioned earlier, we are prepared for the potential that one of the phases falls out during a negotiation, and one of the fortunate things about a development like this is we have enough other phases to keep us occupied that I, that wouldn't be like the be-all, end-all. But I would be remiss if I didn't mention that as a challenge, that's why this is probably the third time this commission and ultimately this council will see a development proposal here, because it, it is complicated, a lot of moving pieces.
One thing I think wasn't touched on is, I'm not sure from the city or from the developer how it goes, is if you could talk or touch a bit on the demolition timeline, how's that going to look, especially, you know, for the neighbors, for the park?
Yep, that, so the demolition will, it encompasses two different main components. One is demolition of the building, and the other one's demolition of the massive parking lot. That will be the very first activity that takes place when the first... when the first phase starts. That's gonna have to come down. And very likely, we're still working some of this out, but very likely, much of the, like many of the internal roads and parking and parking lots are gonna have to be like masqueraded, and likely even paved at the beginning of the project. So, that demolition will happen. It will be a multi-month process, but that's part of that sort of 18-month period that I outlined for the first building. It'll be wrapped into that.
For the townhomes, that will actually be designed by a different company and architects?
They will, yes.
Okay, so there is the possibility of having some type of ground floor living units for people that have trouble with stairways?
I do think that's possible. The answer that I think, well, the current site plan is based on a walk-up with stairs, because in order to accommodate the density of the site, and the density the developer wants, single-story sort of ranch-style townhomes take up a lot of surface area. And although we have 11.7 acres to work with, that doesn't go as far as we would like it to. So that is the current plan, but I'm not going to ultimately be the one that brings the townhome building to the city for the next level of review, or the building permit. So there is the potential that it could change.
All right, Madam Chair, members of the commission, if there aren't any other questions, can kind of do over.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, Kyle. Yeah, just sort of kind of go over the, kind of the timeline, or what this project looks like. Kind of taking a step back, looking at it from a little higher up. So this is the, kind of the broad strokes process, like Andrew had talked about at the very beginning. This is the discussion about setting the, kind of the base zoning parameters for all the different projects that are gonna be going into the entire site itself, which as Kyle had talked about, will be different developers, even though his company's taken on the master plan developer aspect of it, there'll be other companies as part of that. So, this is the PUD rezoning. As Andrew had alluded to, and is in your packet, as I mistakenly printed this giant environmental assessment worksheet off, and this is just the draft, not even the final version. But as part of the state's process, the environmental assessment worksheet has to be submitted for a 30-day review period. So, that was actually submitted earlier today to the state, and then we'll also be sending out to Department of Natural Resources, Watershed District, you know, Fridley, surrounding cities, the tribes, pretty much anyone you can think of, we send out this environmental assessment worksheet to. And then they have 30 days to comment on this worksheet before it comes back to the city council. So during that 30-day timeline, after this PUD, the kind of project gets set on hold, so that the environmental assessment worksheet can be gone through, right? So that's the traffic study, noise study, all these studies are gonna be reviewed by a bunch of different agencies and everything like that. And then they'll bring their comments back to the city council, which will then make a determination on the environmental impact of this project. Once that's made, then this PUD process, or the PUD rezoning, will go in front of the council for actual final approval. And then, you know, going forward, Kyle and the other developers will be coming back to the planning commission for additional site plan approvals, building permits, and everything like that, to actually get into the nitty-gritty of building materials and all sorts of other, kind of more in-depth items with regards to the site plans. Another big item, as Andrew had kind of talked about through his proposal, is that we will need to process a variance for this project at the next planning commission meeting. That's just with the project being within the shoreline overlay district, and it being a higher percentage of impervious surface than 35%, which, I don't know, any project that could be 35%. The original intent of that ordinance was to ensure that people of single-family homes, or duplexes, kind of the smaller sized developments, weren't paving their entire yard or entire lot, which does happen within the city, and, you know, causing issues for the local, the lakes and everything like that, mostly because single-family homes can't put in stormwater retention, they can't put in filtration, they can't put in all these stormwater remediation efforts to make sure that the lake, you know, gets better. They just kind of pave over everything. So, that variance will be coming before the planning commission, before moving on to the council. That being said, also running kind of at the same time as this, Kyle will be bringing forth a bond application to the city council. That is just for this development to apply to the state for their tax-exempt bonds. That is no, you know, no consequence to the city, we just act as a pass-through for that. But we do make some money out of about 1% of the bond application that goes to the city to kind of pay for our handling of all that kind of stuff. So, this is, like I said, kind of just the broad strokes, PUD rezoning amendment. And then going forward, there's gonna be a lot more discussions, like outlined in this, there's a development agreement, which is gonna have a lot of stuff in it. You know, there will be the actual financing discussions that are gonna be handled by the EDA, and there will be, you know, agreements and stipulations with the financing and everything like that. So there's still a lot of negotiations that are going to go on with this project, and items that, you know, while aren't in the rezoning of this, will be continued to negotiated between us, the developer, everything like that. So, there's still a lot to go on, but this is kind of the starting, kind of getting this project off the ground. So, with that, we can definitely move on to the...
Yeah, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing section of our meeting. Thank you all for your patience. This one's got a lot of information in it, but we appreciate you all sticking around. Sarah, are you gonna call?
Again, if you guys want to hand anything in, I have six to go through, so we still have time. So I'd like to call Teresa Carson of 794 Parkside Lane. You're welcome to go to the podium.
Madam, sorry ma'am, just, Madam Chair, members of the commission, just sorry, some over, some rules prior to getting started here. With everyone getting, everyone, we want to make sure everyone has time to speak, and we're not sitting here all night, so we will do a five-minute, which is standard for limit on speaking. So, please try to keep your comments, you know, within, not repeating the same items all the time, but just like our city council meetings, we'll have a five-minute. I'll put a little timer up, so you have that time. Once you hear the timer, feel free to finish the thought that you're talking about, and then we'll go from there. And then if there aren't too many, we can always recircle back to people if they would like to add some other items or anything like that. So, sorry, my apologies, ma'am. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I live in Parkside Lane Townhomes, and is this the committee that talks about what changes are gonna be done to the actual park, Sullivan Lake Park?
Nope, this is not. That would be the Parks Commission, that once we get to the, kind of the park dedication fees from the developer, they'll help work with the developer on what actually changes are gonna be made to the park, with that, those funding.
And if I can add to that, they recently did a master plan for Sullivan Lake Park, which is kind of the expectation for the park improvements that it built out. So, that's kind of our expectation at this point, is that whatever park improvements are made are in line with that master plan.
Okay. Now, will the walking paths still be circular around Lake Sullivan? Because on the flats that I'm looking at, I don't see that continuous parking, or walking path around the park, around the lake.
Yep, that's a great question. So the site plan doesn't really get to show it, but that path will stay going all the way to 53rd. And then as part of the project moving forward, the site will also integrate more kind of walking paths and everything like that to connect to the city path. So, the city paths will be, stay the same, hopefully be improved on with the additional funding, but there won't be any changes to the full around the park, and then that path going all the way up to 53rd, and all the way down to 52nd.
Okay. And my concern is with that influx of new bodies coming into this development, Sullivan Lake Park is actually quite small. And so, how is that gonna accommodate all these new people coming in? And then, our concern also is, you know, that park is open till 11 o'clock at night, and it's already got quite a bit of traffic later, you know? That's still going through there, and now you're bringing in so many more people. How is that gonna affect it?
Yeah, and I think a large part of that is, you know, that's why we have the park dedication, is so that with the funds from this development, that's gonna pay for improvements and everything to kind of better the park for not only the current residents, but also the new residents, to make it more available for that. With park hours, as with anything with the city, it's definitely something to kind of keep in mind and look at, you know, are there smaller changes or stuff like that that might be able to happen to, you know, if there are any issues that are caused by it?
And then, the other thing is parking, you know, are these, like this building, you know, the streets now are totally filled with cars that are from these residents that live in this building. We don't have that, you know, around this area. There aren't side streets where the parking can overflow to, so where does it go?
Yeah, that's another great question. And that's why, you know, the current proposed parking is above what the city has as a zoning standard, so that helps. And then also, there are future negotiations with, including, you know, parking within rent and stuff like that with the development as well, to kind of mitigate that moving forward.
Those are my comments. Thanks.
Okay, we have Ann, forgive me, Pineau of 762 Parkside Lane.
Ann Pineau, and I live in the Parkside Village Townhome Association, which is south of this whole development. My main concern that I've heard, and that I have, is the density of this. This is a big change for this neighborhood, because a lot of it is residential around it. Yes, we have commercial, but there's nowhere near the amount of people coming in. So as you progress going forward, I ask you to consider reducing the density. You've heard the issue of parking. The other question I have is on the infrastructure. The infrastructure will be owned by the development, as I understand it, like the sewers in the street, they will not be city streets?
Yep, that's correct. The water sewer will still be city, but the streets will be the developer, or the development.
Right. Okay, so the sewer will be, so the city will also maintain like the containment vault for...
The stormwater will be part of, the stormwater will be a management plan between the city and developer, but the, like, the water util, you know, utilities, I guess you could call them, would be city-owned.
Okay, but that's the developer. When it turns over to the owners, we need to consider about that. Because I know in our association, we own the sewer and the street. So, to keep things maintained, I would recommend the city owns the sewer at least, so. The other thing is on the environment, of course, the water filtering, that sort of thing, the park. So, I appreciate the information you shared today, but please keep it in consideration. When they put the street in, we had problems with the lake. So, and then the roundabout, I don't know if you know, but when the bus stops at the bus stop where it is, the traffic backs up. So now you're exacerbating a problem by adding, you know, 200, 300 cars when that happens. So you need to consider that. The other piece is, as this progresses, please keep up the communication with the local people. We appreciate that. Because obviously, this is all new to us. The other thing is with the developer, I'd like to see plans for noise abatement, dust, garbage, that kind of thing. Some people have recommended putting up a big fence between our property and what's being developed. Something that will protect the existing units. Okay, thank you.
Just to finalize on that last comment, I can look a little bit, but there are sections of the EAW that do address that as well. So, we can definitely continue that.
And if I can also, the EAW is gonna be reviewed by a multitude of public agencies, but it's kind of an additional opportunity for the public to weigh in on that. That's something that gets submitted to the Minnesota Environmental Quality Board, and that will have a 30-day period, kind of similar to this, where we can kind of continue that dialogue.
Okay, looks like we have Michelle Barask of 700 Sullivan Way.
Madam Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. First of all, I'm amazed at all the detail that goes into all this, so I can imagine how your heads are spinning. Thank you for taking time to listen. A couple of comments. I'm really grateful that something's going to happen with the water quality of Sullivan Lake. I live in the townhomes that have to access out of 53rd, so I'm a little concerned about the, I'm very concerned about the traffic, actually, but grateful for the lake issue being looked at. Also concerned about density, but as a resident of where I live, pedestrian traffic is already really a challenge. And while I heard that, that the one pedestrian access near the east end is a good one, it's not if you're sight impaired, if you can't move fast enough, or if you're concerned about cars coming off of Central that don't even know that you're there. So, I hope that additional attention will be paid to that all along 53rd. I have a question, I couldn't begin to ask questions about all the details of what you're doing, but I do have a question about the, for the developer. Talked about phases of this development. So I was picturing, the first part phase starts, or first phase begins, and the building is taken down. There's a lot of work done, and they said there could be some lapses because of changes, or waiting for another developer. Is there a plan so that it doesn't just look like an ongoing four-year construction site? Is there a plan that if the building is torn down, and there's a delay, or something that, that it will still be attractive-looking? I would just like that to be considered, so it's not, well, there's a delay, and sorry, it doesn't look too good. Thank you for your work, and I'm nervously looking forward to what's gonna happen.
Now, we have Sandra Davison of 751st Avenue.
Thank you for allowing us to address this. First of all, my takeaway from previous meetings, and from what I'm hearing here now today, is that this is really pretty much a done deal. Am I correct? After your vote today?
Nope.
I have a question to any one of you. So, so, so the takeaway from the previous meetings that we've been at, and we've addressed this, is that there's a purchase agreement with the developer, contingent that, that all the codes for Columbia Heights are met. Currently, those codes would not allow this building to be built. So, let's just change all the rules and make it happen, which, you know, it doesn't make sense to me. We have, as a community, have no control over whom Medtronic sells their property to. That's, you know, that's like telling me I can't sell my house to whomever I want to. I get that. But, codes have been put in place for a reason, and they shouldn't be changed just at the lark for somebody to want to build. We've done that. I've been, I've lived in Columbia Heights, I moved here when I was in the fifth grade. By the color of my hair, you can tell how long that's been. I've probably been here longer than you guys have. So, I've seen many projects come and go, and they're not completed, they're not, not done the way they originally are presented, just because there was no foresight or follow-through. Good example of that is 47th. They were going to be beautiful condos. If I had that, if I paid $500,000 for a condo there, I'd be madder than hell at what is built next to it. I have, I know construction workers that were building that, and their cars got broken into, stolen, tools gone during the day while they're building. We have the disaster of the Rainbow Site. We've started so many projects. Actually, the townhouses that a lot of these people live in, the ones that face 53rd, that was the start of the project, that was phase one. This is what the... This is what the phases worry me about. That was Phase 1. That went off without a hitch. Those townhouses were sold in a month. Then there's Phase 2, the townhouses behind it. We went through three bankruptcies of construction people. And it sat there. They started to build it. We watched them, the, the foundation break away. During the time, city had to step in. They're just, I need some security that says this is going to go from start to finish and be completed accurately. Not, not a Phase 1 because, okay, so we build these two buildings. Now it's, now the rest sits. Or they can't, they can't get a builder to do the townhouses because, you know, they're right up on the shore. Good luck with water in your basement because we all have it. So then, then it sits there. Or, or somebody else comes in, or the, or the economy changes and, and people don't want to pay, you know, whatever the going rate is. And so now we're going to turn it into low income. So I did look on your website because I did ask at the last meeting, same, same as you, Mr. Johnson, is there some, some of your building sites that we can look at? And so that we have, have a fair comparison? Can we talk to your management company? Because you need somebody to manage these places once they're built. And he said, "I'll put something, I'll send you an email right away." Never heard anything. And I don't care about the other companies that he worked for. That's not the same builder. I want to see what they have done. Their buildings are in California and New York. They're trying to get one started in Rochester, trying to get one started in St. Cloud. We have no proof of building. That's my concern. The other part, other people have, have come across it, but I just want to give you some numbers because I went to Google you. So as far as the density, Columbia Heights has, or I should say, a density consensus is 5,000 people per square mile. And that is on the high side of what is considered a good density amount. Columbia Heights currently has 6,448 people per square mile. Fridley's 2,900, New Brighton's 3,600, Blaine's 2,200, St. Anthony's 42.
We'll let you finish the, the thought you're on, but yeah.
So, so we're al- already overpopulated. We have, the concern then becomes of the police department. We talk about parking right under your nose, as this woman mentioned. There, I, I don't want people parking all over the street. I would like, if they're, if you're going to do this, I want no parking signs on 51st Avenue because that's going to be an easy cut. I think you need to respect St. Tim's Church because that's the next place that people are going to be parking. They don't care. And, and especially in the summertime. You know, people are going to be willing to pay for parking in the winter because they want their car toasty warm. In the summer, they don't care where they park. They don't care what they do. You know, it, that's, it's crazy. And, and then the other, the other part was, you've talked about how many units. 134 units per complex, but you haven't talked about how many people that holds. We have one bedrooms, we have four bedrooms, we have three, three bedrooms.
Excuse, sorry to cut you off, but just to keep time moving.
My timer's gone?
Yep, yep.
But these are new issues.
Yep, 100%. And we do, we do have the unit countdown in the staff report.
Let me just finish that comment, like you said I could. That, there's 682 bedrooms. That could potentially be 1,200, 1,300 drivers, two cars. There's 675 parking spots. Where are those people going to go? Yeah, it's, it's, you're, I, you're, you're, you're very smart about your, your, your surveys and everything, but that should only be a guiding point. Use some common sense first from that point. Numbers are numbers. Common sense is what makes a community.
Thank you for your comments.
And next up, we have Lauren Tranberg of 4550 Central.
My name is Lauren Tranberg, and I think the main thing I would be concerned about is the parking and the number of units, the number of vehicles. I know they referred to Medtronic's and how many cars came and went when it was open. But I also think, and I might be wrong, but I think they staged their release of people, if you want to call that, so they clocked out at half-hour intervals to slow down the truck crunch of the traffic. And if you're, I think it said something about up to 70% of the parking spots were for compact cars or could be. But these units are intended for families. So I think they probably are going to be a higher number of minivans. So as you get longer vehicles and less parking, and typically everybody wants to go up to Central, I think that you really need to look into this a little bit more and see how many vehicles are really going to be traveling at what times. I just think it's way too many people in a smaller area and way too much traffic. So I guess that's my point.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, that, that was a great point, and especially with the compact cars. Just wanted to speak a little clearance on that. So the current city zoning code considers a normal parking stall as 19 by 20. And all the stalls within this development are being proposed at nine, nine, not 19 by 20, 9 by 20. And they're being proposed at 9 by 18, which is still a normal-sized stall for a lot of kind of current parking spots. The current parking spaces in the ratio apartments where all of our city staff park and the residents all park are that 9 by 18-sized stall. So it's a normal stall. It's just considered "compact," quote unquote, due to the size of the stalls that are in city code. So it's that two-foot difference that considers a compact, not what you would traditionally think of like when you go to a parking ramp and you can only fit that really small car in that, that spot. It's that 9 by 18-sized lot.
Next up, we have Anne Scanlon of 715 50th.
Good evening, commission. I thank you for taking the time to listen to us. That's a great park. It's amazing. It, it should be the highlight of this community. Hussid Park's decent. It's okay. But the difference is we have the pond, we have the aging tree, we have the wildlife, we have the community. I mean, I can turn around here, and I bet you seven people or more in this room don't know me, but they know me because they see me walk that park every day. That's my community. That's why I moved here. I think it's remiss that you're considering this proposal this size. It, it isn't a community. It's a quick way to turn a profit down the road. It's, oh, we're going to get money, we're going to get this. That's not true. I managed an apartment building for one year. A three-bedroom apartment in a complex like this averages six to 10 adults because people rent, have their family stay with them. It is generally four to five cars to a three-unit apartment. You have, if I'm not mistaken, I thought it was, where'd my notes go? Oops. How many one bedroom, six bedroom? Yeah, I lost my notes. Sorry.
We can, we can pull up the slide for you.
Yeah, anyway, it, the density of this is ridiculous. If you look at the Met Council 2040 Thrive Project, which talks about density in cities, Columbia Heights is considered center or urban center, which means we exceed the density proposals for the Met Council. They also talk significantly in there about green space in parks for the livelihood of your residents, for the health of your residents, both mental and also air quality, because that all does change. The impact of this apartment building is going to increase our need for police and fire. On average, the response call for a fire department should be under five minutes. But you put in a complex like this with one entrance, one exit, it's increased. For example, going into the Legends, is anyone here on the fire department? Okay, the Legends in the city that I work for, going into that apartment building and the way these are structured, it takes them an additional five minutes generally to get to those apartments. That's a life that's lost. The one entrance, the one exit. I'm not sure how that works. You don't have enough parking for these people. I don't want people parking on the street. The one thing I love about this city, or a couple, if you make the right decisions, is the no parking in the winter. You plow our streets amazingly well. You should be proud of that. But we're going to lose that. We're going to become parking everywhere. I had something else, and I don't even remember. But I do, I, I look at you and say, take in consideration your residents. We all agree that something needs to happen there. But this particular development with this type of density is not it. Don't take away our green space. What you're doing, don't tell me you're adding to it. I looked at the plans. You're taking away a swamp with all sorts of amazing wildlife. We have birders come from other cities to here. We have old trees. Hussid Park doesn't have that. Be proud of this park. Make it the goldstone of Columbia Heights. Look at something else. I mean, I think we'd rather see some more townhomes like these residents have, but maybe lower, maybe some ground-level ones for aging in place. I'm sorry, sir, am I picking on you because you happen to have white hair? Sorry. Do you think you can do a lot of stairs in 10 years, 20 years? No. Are you fair to expect to have to move out of your city that you are proud of because you can't find housing?
I know that is a problem. I've heard from people looking. Myself, I have not looked. I'm happy. I live in a rambler, so I have no real stair problems yet.
Yeah, but it's going to change. You, you're lucky you're in a rambler. But come on, you guys. Think hard. Think, think about your residents. Think about your citizens that you work for and act for. That's all I can say. You know, I can hope you make the right decision.
And now we have Karen Smith of 825 51st.
Hi, I'm Karen Smith. Actually, I don't live in Columbia Heights, but I put down the church address because for 40 years I've been administrator of Little Voyagers Monastery School who leases space from St. Tim's. And I am shocked to see what comes by. I just had a turkey outside the door, you know, while I was doing work over the weekend, trying to catch up. But this Sullivan Lake area is a big concern because we don't only have the church property and we have our playground there, but we take hikes around Lake Sullivan. We go for nature walks. We've caught tadpoles out of there. You know, gone research. We go see what kind of wildlife we have. It's been a big part of that community, not just for us, but all the other building that's gone up. And I've seen the townhouses go up next door to them. You know, that, that is a great place for a lot of older people that, you know, because they're a street level. But the thing about it is if you put a development like this in it and then say they're going to put a few dollars toward your park, they're going to overwhelm that park. That park is already overwhelmed. And I had just been, got noticed that we're not going to be able to use the park because they're going to do some redesigning in it. The city's paying for this. And my understanding is, oh, I agree. Tennis courts are out of style, probably pickleball, whatever you're going to do there is great. But what's going to happen is you're putting all this money into the park. Then in a year and a half and so, by the time they get the development, they're going to put money toward that. Are you going to start and waste your money and redo things again or put something else in? Like these people said, there's only so much space in that park for picnics or whatever. And believe me, this 51st and this neighborhood gets parked up for people that even just want to have a community dinner under the building there, which is great. We've done picnics over there as well. So losing Sullivan Lake is a big thing for this community. The other thing is you guys talk about traffic. I can't believe anybody would stand up here and say it's not going to affect the traffic on 53rd. The changes that were made to 53rd, I no longer leave the school to go shopping and go west on 53rd because they've narrowed the intersection to get onto university so bad it can be blocked up, backed up. Past the assisted living facility, you know, a couple blocks, and that light isn't long enough for people to go. I used to sneak over on the shoulder, go up and can go over a cub. I go up the side streets to get into Fridley and then cross the university. So that is a problem. The other thing, and I, it's interesting because I never would have thought to mention it here, but I was coming out of Target the other day and a bus stopped. All the traffic backed up behind it. So if they're going to do something, something's got to be done so that if someone wants to ride the bus, they don't block all the traffic that's going west. I agree with what's been said here about the density of this. I know the open parking lot's been great and the walk, but please don't put something in there that totally destroys that environment. And I would fight to the end of the earth to let somebody go through St. Tim's property to have access to 51st. My, I do have a question for you. Right now, there is a walkway from Sullivan Lake, and it's part of the park system up behind the businesses. The church donated that to the city for a park. Are you taking that away?
Nope. So that walkway will actually be maintained.
That will be maintained and done.
Yep, and as part of that utility easement, there's actually two large stormwater pipes that go through that from Central Avenue. So there will be some changes as MINDOT goes to try and filter some of that, but that whole entire bottom part will be maintained as a trail access. And we're actually, part of this is trying to improve that with MINDOT and the connections. You can actually walk up to Central Avenue and across Central Avenue if you need to.
Okay, because I know that also goes along the north side of the townhouses, and, and there isn't much space between. If I owned a townhouse along that path and then something else comes up that's going to totally block everything where it's open space would be quite an adjustment. But thank you for your time.
And seeing no questions in, online, that is the end of our...
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion. Does that make sense? Does anybody else have anything they'd like to mention?
Did you want to speak, ma'am? Oh, yep. Feel free to step up to the microphone. We just need you to fill out this other sheet. But yeah, if there's anyone else, just please raise your hand and we can get you the sheet that, to be filled out. You can fill out the sheet afterwards. Feel free to give your comments.
I'm Sarah Rickaby. I'm just talking about one thing. So in how this meeting was listed, it was listed as an application for the planned unit development and also a vacation of easements. In the meeting, there may have been more, there may have been information about the vacation of easements. I may have missed it, but I didn't hear much specifically about the easements that would be vacated. You did confirm that there'd be a change to the city paths or that there would not be a change to the city paths, including the path going around the lake and the path going all the way to 53rd. In this last question, I did hear a bit about the other path that I'm concerned about, the one that goes near St. Tim's, goes from the east side of the lake and then proceeds eastward to Central. I heard a little bit about there'll be some changes, but not some changes, nothing very specific. So it'd be good to know that that's truly going to be maintained and not sort of maintain, sort of not. Because that does have a lot of value for all of us, both from a wild... both from a wildlife perspective and access to the businesses on Central, some right there. And I know this city is a green city. I don't remember the exact phrase, Green Step City or something. So preserving a way of walking to the businesses is very, very important. And, and I appreciate, Carl, I think it says, your comment about going to Chipotle and which one you go to. And if that path were eliminated, there'd be even more cars going that way because I'm sure I'm not the only one that enjoys a pleasant walk that goes through that park and then just ends near Central, but not walking for a while near Central. I'm sure there would be more than one person that would jump in their car to go to those businesses if they didn't have that nice walkway that already exists. So that's my main comment is that I want, want to be sure that, that will still be preserved.
I can express on that and then if you have further questions, so feel free. I'll just start out with the utility easement vacation. So through the center of the site, it's kind of where the parking lot, running east to west, just south of the L-shaped building is. There's technically a parcel of land that the city has a utility easement on. So that's what's being vacated. That's what's being, the, the city's kind of giving up our, our right to that for the developer to develop on this parcel. Utilities are still going to be in the, the parcel and the property and everything, but that's just us removing our claim to that part for utilities.
And if I can speak to that a little bit more, it's actually for the sanitary sewer that's on the property. That has to be reconfigured. And I think that's kind of one of the things that came up regarding that trail. We would just kind of change the piping in particular for that, but then try to restore the trail to how it previously was.
Yeah. So just to clarify on that a little bit.
So it'd be taken away for a while.
Yep. Just a, just a sec. So the trail on the south side, so there are currently two, I think they're like 45-inch storm sewer pipes. So all of Central Avenue to the east dumps into those two storm sewer pipes and then right directly into the lake without any filtration or anything like that. So everything from Central Avenue currently goes right into the lake as part of, as part of Central Avenue reconfiguration. This is different project of, part of MINDOT's project on Central Avenue. They're going to be, you know, using, kind of reconfiguring those lines to add filtration. So that way, Central Avenue is no longer just dumping into Sullivan Lake. They want to actually treat the stormwater before it gets into the lake. So there will be, there, I don't want to say there will, but there might be some kind of removal of the trail while that work is being done. But ultimately, it's to benefit the lake. And then MINDOT intends, the trail will be put back, maybe not in the same configuration, but on that same parcel of land. And really, the goal is, is to actually improve that trail. So currently, as you walk that trail, and like you said, you get to the businesses, it just dumps into a parking lot. And there really isn't any interconnectivity between, you know, getting to the business and actually getting up to Central. So it's, you know, the city's job, the developer's job, but mostly all MINDOT and working with those businesses to try and find a way where we can actually get that trail from the back end of those businesses for further east and actually connect with the trail that's going to be put on Central Avenue. And then also, the intent is to put a pedestrian crossing there along 52nd so that you can kind of continue that trail into Fridley and along 52nd to the east. So we're, we're trying to enhance that and make it more walkable for everybody in the businesses.
So there would for sure be, still be a connection from the park all the way to Central.
Yep.
Or to the businesses.
To the businesses and hopefully to Central and to the other trails.
If I can kind of touch on the other thing you raised regarding Green Step Cities. One of the things that, that program includes is complete streets policies, which we kind of implemented and partially because Fridley also has one as part of their active transportation plan. And that is a policy that we really felt strongly needed to be in place for public-private developments so that if there are opportunities to improve connectivity and if there are specific conflict points, specific, just areas where things are not safe for pedestrians, bicyclists, transit units, there's, that is the mechanism in which we can use to help solve for those things.
Thank you.
And sorry, just real quick, did she grab a, what'd you give? Yeah.
Thank you. This is my first city council meeting. And I just want to say a quick thank you to Mr. Boucher for fixing my chicken scratch.
Just to let you know, this isn't a city council meeting. It's a planning commission meeting. So what we do is we make recommendations to then send to the city council to then make a final decision on that, just to help separate the two.
It's kind of like an advisory board.
I'm sorry?
It's kind of like an advisory board.
Okay. Well, thank you for all of your service and I, it's my first meeting of that type as well. I just wanted to cycle back to a summary of a comment about flooding. I'm not so much concerned about maybe these huge high rises developing water in the basement, but water is sneaky and destroys things. And so just the idea that, you know, if we are going to build something like this, in addition to some other, you know, concerns that other people have shared, just wanted to highlight, like, you know, please do not ask anybody to rely on the power grid to keep their building watertight and structurally sound. I know that is allowed by code, so, you know, I've heard a lot about what code allows today. Just want to make sure that we are trying to do this thing with as little an environmental impact and with as much confidence as we can in our structure's lasting. So no knocks. And I totally trust the people with the diplomas in this field and the architect and all these people, but I do also just want to keep this thing on the table. Thank you.
And if you would like to speak, we still have forms that you can come up and fill out if you haven't spoken.
Hi. My name is Walter Horishnik. I live at 51st and Madison Street. I've, I've lived there for 40 years and I grew up in Columbia Heights. So people always ask me, why are you still living in Columbia Heights? It's such a kind of a ghetto area. And I go, well, no, it's not. It's a really great area. And part of it has to do with Sullivan Lake and, and that, and this neighborhood. And people are talking about density. I, I think you should really reconsider the, the height of the master plan and, and cap it off at four stories instead of six. Because I've, I've looked around at buildings and four stories, the neighbor could, neighborhood could manage that way more than a six-story building. It just has a, a horizon level that, that is more tolerable than a six-story building. And people talk about, you know, and, and it'll bring down the density of the, of the community as well. And not only the four-story, but, but the townhomes that surround the walking path that goes from north to south along the lake, those should be eliminated as well. Or the, the number of them should be reduced and so that there's more of a green space between the lake and the building itself. So that, that would make it way more manageable for the residents. And people talk about density. I've lived here and I've watched duplex, duplexes come around Jackson, Jackson Street that go parallel to Central. And those are single family, no, those are duplexes, so two families can live there. But the amount of cars is way more than two families. You know, there's like six to eight cars for each duplex. And those streets are filled up on Jackson and, and 50th. So you have to remember, families, you know, kind of, kind of, kind of pull together these days and they fill up townhomes and they fill up apartment buildings. So you really can't count on the number of people and the number of cars that fill a certain area. And I agree with, you know, the amount of density that is in Columbia Heights. You should really consider that. You know, it seems, the numbers I've been hearing, Columbia Heights is a pretty highly dense area. So you have to consider that into a whole, you know, every statistic that, that you read about, you know, the police, the fire, fire department, the number of cars and the number of residents. And respect the, the residents that have lived here for a long time because the higher the density goes up, it, it just increases the use of the park, the use of the street and the use of the facilities, you know, that the city provides. So that's really all I need, want to, you know, want you to consider. And, and besides, the developer that is building this doesn't have a really hard track record. So research that more before you, you know, decide who, who's going to be building these buildings. You know, the, the townhomes on Alpha 47th, the, the whole debacle of the Rainbow Site. It, it seems that a, a lot of time and money is spent into planning something, but the follow-through of, of the people that you decide to build these facilities don't always come, you know, you know, have a good track record. I've, I've seen too many, you know, like the townhomes off of 47th. I sure won't want to live there to see the way it's developed over the last, you know, 15 years or so. So thank you for my time and I appreciate everyone putting their time into considering all, all the residents. Thank you.
Looks like we have George Fix, 707-50 and a half.
I just have two specific questions and it concerns the townhomes. There was members giving us the setback, front and back, and they varied widely. The townhomes, do they front on the park or do they back on the park? What, what side is, are you looking at from the town, from the park?
So the back would face the park and those setbacks aren't being changed? Those are maintaining the.
My next question then also involves that. When you're walking, they, they basically are right on the path coming from 53rd down and then going over to Central. That, that's where the townhomes are. How far, if you're walking down the path, how far away will the actual buildings, the townhomes be? What kind of a setback are you talking about?
So as you can kind of see from the top of this picture, you can, you can't really see from here. See if we can zoom in. You can kind of see the path is to the left of the property line. So the townhome setback is to the property line and we can, let's see if we can zoom in here. I don't see the setback number on there. Okay. Yep. We don't, so we don't have setbacks from the path. The path is on city property. So it's, the setbacks are, you know, from the townhome to the property line. And those are, you know, 25 feet from the front, 30 year, 30 feet from the corner or side yards and then 50 feet from the rear yard. So there's, there's space before it gets to.
50 feet from the townhomes to the.
Property line.
The property line, but that's the backside.
Yep. And then the paths.
Do you have any idea how, I, I know they talked about the city's going to be selling some acreage to the, the developer. Is that going to narrow the amount of, of parkland between the, the path and the edge of the, of the park?
Nope. So that parkland being sold, I don't know if you can pull up that previous one you had, is actually just at the corner of the parcel and it's about 7,000 square feet. So nothing will be impacting the path that runs kind of north, south on the west side of the parcel. This would be just extending a little bit into the corner of the parcel, kind of handling down. You kind of see the dotted, or the line, the two, the line with two dotted lines and then extending. That's where the, the little piece of parkland is being added.
It's going to be a minimum of 50 feet, you're saying?
Yep. Yep. To the property line and then more to the pathway.
Thank you.
That, that I don't know. Yep. It would be no closer than the current building right now. So the current building has about 10 feet. Yeah. Can you pull up the Medtronic? So the Medtronic building has like a five-foot setback currently from the property line. So it'll be further away than the Medtronic building is to the path.
Is there any markers out there on the property line yet?
There's not. Nope. We can pull up the map to give you an idea. Yep. Yep. That's outside of the development. That's on city property. So you can kind of see where the property line is at with regards to the Medtronic site. All right. With that, we don't have any other people that have filled out a sheet. We can continue on with the meeting. We can close the public hearing and then kind of talk with the planning commissioners, answer some more questions and continue on.
Okay. Thank you all for joining us. I know this was a lot of information and a little longer of a session, but we really appreciate your input and you guys contributing. And thank you for, thank you for being here tonight. We will now close the public hearing section of the meeting and we will move on to... Do we have any more questions from the commission?
If we want to wait a second.
Yeah, if we want to wait a second.
Yeah. With all the noise, I'll just do one quick, just for the recording and for the public. Thank you very much. The EAW is within its public comment period. So we definitely recommend people to go and visit the EAW. We have it on our city website. We'll be putting out notices in the newspaper. We'll have a public meeting, everything like that for comments on the environmental assessment worksheet, which goes over a lot of the questions that were brought up today to include some of the ones that we didn't quite get the answer about noise and dust and how that's going to be handled with the redevelopment of the site. That's covered in the EAW as well. So would recommend people to go take a look at that and definitely leave public comments. With that, we can kind of answer any questions.
So there'll be, this'll, once we make our decision, oh, once we make our decision here, then it'll be brought to the city council to make a final determination. Our job here is to recommend that it goes to the city council. So yeah, there's, there's other opportunity for discussion. Well, yeah, because we start at six, so. Oh, okay.
Sir, if you, if you, we'll get an email from you and we can kind of, appreciate it.
Okay. We can move on. Does any, any of the commissioners have any more questions after that discussion?
I had one question. So there's obviously that plot of land north of the proposed development. That's like kind of in the parking lot of Target. Obviously, this is just, you know, a hypothetical, but is there any plan to use that to alleviate kind of what some of the residents are complaining about? Whether it's the bus, could that become like a bus terminal or parking? Whether it's the bus, could that become like a bus terminal or parking? Could that be purchased and used as additional parking, whether a ramp or above-ground parking?
So we're, there's not being, currently being discussed with the development. That's a separate parcel in a separate city or anything like that, not really part of this project for parking, especially without knowing who the owner is or that type of option. I think one big item that was discussed was that bus stop location, which is definitely part of this process as we move forward. Is there a way to move that bus stop maybe a little further back from the roundabout so it doesn't plug the roundabout completely? And that can be kind of discussed as we move forward as well.
Sorry, I was just going to note that with the F-line coming through, they'll have to build new infrastructure for a stop there anyway. So I think it would make sense to engage with Metro Transit at that time to see if we can try and get some more, better functioning access there.
And if I can just add to that, we've engaged Metro Transit. They were part of the development review process and it will be an expectation that we incorporate the F-line facilities into this project.
Anyone else have any other questions before we move on? Okay, then.
Motions, yep. Five motions today.
So the motions really are, it's the preliminary plat, the, the PUD, the easement vacations. And the, and they all relate to those, the park and infrastructure improvements.
Yep. So there's one ordinance, draft ordinance for the PUD district, a resolution recommending approval of the PUD, a recommendation on approval of the preliminary plat and then a recommendation on the easement vacation. So three resolutions and ordinance amendment. And then we just have the wave of the reading as usual.
Anybody want to get started or I can, yeah?
I'll, I'll move to waive the readings of draft ordinance number 1716, PUD district number 202501, rezoning of property, draft resolution number 2025043, PUD district for number 202501, draft resolution number 2025-044, preliminary plat approval and draft resolutions number 2025045, easement vacations. There being ample copies available to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the planning commission to positively recommend city council approval of the ordinance amendment number 1716, subject to the conditions of approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Motion for the planning commission to positively recommend city council approval of the PUD district, resolution number 2025043 as presented, subject to the conditions of approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
I'll motion for the planning commission to positively recommend city council approval of the preliminary plat resolution number 2025-044 as presented, subject to the conditions of approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the planning commission to positively recommend city council approval of the easement vacations, resolution number 2025-045 as presented, subject to the conditions of approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion also carries. Any other discussion? Any other topics we want to talk about? Thank you guys for being here and joining us. It was a long one. We appreciate your patience and the information was very helpful.
Ma'am Chair, members of the commission, thank you very much for the, for the hard work that you guys done. There's going to be a lot more stuff coming for you, a lot more discussions and, you know, really diving into each of these site plans and everything like that. So next month, we'll have the variance hopefully and then kind of really getting into some of the actual project specifics, elevations, all the fun stuff of kind of diving deeper into the project. So with that, I have any, I don't have anything else. I don't know if the council member.
I would like to say kudos to city staff once again. This was a pretty incredible package and lots of very useful, if not sometime overwhelming information. But I think it was very helpful for us to be able to see all that detail and be able to make, you know, a better discussion and, you know, informed decision-making really for carrying this on. So thank you guys.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.